I'd like to welcome everybody this evening. We have a public comment period, starting with Barbara Bowman.
Well, I have a problem. I, uh, I'm Barb Bowman, if you don't know me, and I have Bowman Interiors downtown. Anyway, we, you know, we had this 20 and 21 degree below zero, and my bathroom at the store froze. Well, the next day it was fine, so I thought everything was fine. I had water in the toilet, water in the sink, everything was going fine. Well, the first of this, or the last Monday, the water department called me, and they said I had a leak. And I went down and I couldn't find it, and they finally found it under the floor of my bathroom. And I was shocked at how much water had been through there. 67,000 gallons of water. I figured it out from what they told me. It was $5.25 for, uh, what, 100 gallons of water? That it was gonna, that bill was gonna be over $3,500.
I have your total here. The total of the bill is $538.06. It's $538.06.
Oh. That's not as bad as I thought when they told me how much.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Well, that's better, still. So, I was wondering if you could help me any on it.
I don't know how it works.
I'm happy to talk about it.
Well, we've had, you know, we've had these situations before, Barb, and, you know, we've not forgiven anybody's bills in the past, you know. What we have done is we've tried to work with you, and I'm sure Nick would set up some sort of a payment plan, you know, and make it where it's manageable for you. But, you know, it's one of those things where we open up a can of worms, you know.
Yeah, I just, there was no way I knew it happened because there was no water anywhere. My bathroom is such that it's a dirt floor underneath, and there's no way to get to the water lines. There's no crawl space or anything else.
Definitely an unfortunate situation.
Yes. Well, that sounds better than what I figured.
As per, if you were figuring, Barb, it's per thousand gallons, not per hundred.
Oh, per thousand, well, that's better. She told me per hundred.
I don't know what she told, yeah, but I got the bill from her today. It's $538.06. And I can talk to Laura tomorrow morning and have her get in contact with you to set up something that works for that.
That would be, that would be better. I was in shock when I, she told me that was per hundred. When I called her and I thought, I'm trying.
Councilwoman is on this committee too. He might want to speak to this.
I was gonna tell you, if you were planning on selling your building in the future, and that is still an outstanding amount you're working on, we could certainly work with the new owner and transfer that over too.
Okay, 'cause I am trying to retire. And that just thought, I'm not gonna be able to get out of here because I gotta pay a water bill.
Right. We'd start to work with you any way we can like that.
Have you been able to get it repaired?
Yes, well, yes.
Good.
I'm in the process. I've, we're in the talking stages of somebody buying the building.
So. I hope that works out for you, Barb.
Yeah, I do too.
You and me both. I'm tired. Thank you.
Sure, thanks for coming in.
I'll have Laura hold you tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
I'll talk to her about it.
Okay, next we have Aaron, Cody.
So, good evening. Thanks for your time. I wanted to come for you for two issues. One, I want to seek approval for use of the Riverwalk area up on the hill, basically where they had Waschanga Days last, where the stage was set up. And what we want to do is we're trying to figure out an alternative way to host prom this year. We feel it's very important we have this experience for the kids because they missed out on it last year. If you're a senior, you can get zero prom experience if we do nothing. And we've been very fortunate to work with the health, our county health official. He's approved having an outdoor event. So, we really want to make it special for the kids this year. And so, instead of hosting it in our parking lot or somewhere more generic, we want to make it really special. So, we thought about, I walked down to the Riverwalk. We've rented a 40 by 80 tent that we'll be able to put up. And I think that spot up there on the hill, basically where they had the stage for the Waschanga Days in that area there, is perfect. We could do a Night Under the Stars theme, have the Riverwalk as a backdrop, the lights and the river water flowing and so forth. So, what I'd like to ask to do is, one, use that area up there to put the tent up and host prom. We would have to bring in a couple porta-potties, obviously, so we want permission to do that as well. And then, probably also along with that, to get permission, if you look at this map, this Google Earth map, I've highlighted the yellow areas of the trail because we know parking will be an issue up there. So, what we'd like to do is still have the kids park in the high school parking lot and then get some volunteers with those four-seater style ATVs that can then shuttle the kids down to the Riverwalk because a promenade is very important in the community. I think to getting, to keeping the community involved in having a promenade, which is where they announce to kids before the dance. How cool I think it would be to incorporate then using the bridge for picture opportunity for the promenade. So, that long stretch gives us plenty of room to line kids up and social distance them. But that's a long walk, obviously, that we would not want the kids to take, especially females in heels. So, if we could shuttle them down that sidewalk, that Riverwalk, and then drop them off, then we want another side, another shuttle on the other side, across the bridge to shuttle them up the hill to the tent so they didn't have to walk all the way up the hill to the tent. So, we'd like permission to be able to do that, to get some volunteers that we would oversee as a school district and vet them and make sure they have everything in place to do it safely and are responsible adults, probably a parent of some of the kids. And then, to do that on both sides, to drive down the Riverwalk, drop them off, take that shuttle back and forth, then also one on the other side, pick them up on the other side of the bridge after the promenade, bring them up the hill, and then have the tent up on the hill and use that. Our timeframe in the application, we're looking either seven to 10, or normal prom is eight to 11. Being outdoors, we thought probably better move it up a little bit for noise, for neighbors and so forth. So, move it, probably looking at a seven to 10. Daylight plays an issue there because obviously you don't want to prom in the daylight. So, we hate going too early because that kind of kills the ambiance and the atmosphere. Kids usually don't dance, and I've DJed for many years, and when there's lights on, they tend to sit and get instead of having fun. I don't know what that psychological stigma is there, but having more atmosphere lights, colored lights, those types of things that a band and DJ provides, they'll dance to. But when it's just white light, they don't do it. So, that's, that's what we'd like to do. You can see in the plan, our plan, I don't know when, just tents out of Junction City, which I know they set up tents here in Council Grove before. They're the ones we're renting from, and they will set up and tear down the tent as well as providing tables and chairs so we don't have to haul them because they're cheap enough, it doesn't make sense for us to haul them. But they will pick that up and tear that down. We'll have everything else picked up the night of. So, all trash and whatnot would be picked up that night so we wouldn't have to worry about things blowing out or getting scattered around town due to wind or whatnot. So, that's, and then, obviously, we, we wouldn't have official security unless it was required. We'll have enough adults there. I'll be there myself. Mr. McGiff, the high school principal, will be there, plus other school members, teachers and whatnot, staff that would be there helping sponsoring the dance. So, we'll have a lot of adults there to make sure things go as they should, but we wouldn't have official security there unless it was something that was required.
Do you have a rain backup plan?
We're working with the health officer on that. Our backup plan would be go to the school gym if allowed. We still are working through that to see what that would look like. But, yeah, we'll have a contingency plan.
How, how do you think that they're going to get out of here after the dance? I mean, they're still gonna have their high heels on.
Yeah, most of the time, every dance I've DJed over the years, the girls show up in heels, but they last about five minutes. Yeah, and the ties last less than that, you know. So, the expectation of the kids would be, you know, they know they're gonna have to walk out. So, either they're doing it barefoot or bringing another pair of shoes. We wouldn't shuttle them out after the prom.
I just wondered if you needed that too.
What we might do though, you brought something up there I didn't even think about now until you say that. I take that back. We probably would look at, because they'll be parked over at the high school. So, look at somehow either working with parents or the kids to get them back over there. But we wouldn't have to use the Riverwalk. We could either.
A suggestion, the trolley.
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about trawling them over to begin with, but then the problem is getting down to the river, the bridge is an issue because obviously, so that's when we thought, well, do it going over that way. But afterwards, the trolley could definitely be.
Yeah, that's what I was suggesting.
Yeah, they don't even have to walk up to the entrance.
Yeah, the trolley would be cool and fun experience for the kids too.
I'd be able to even back it up a ways on the road there so they don't have to walk, you know. I don't know how that could work out.
They can go in and turn around and then.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd definitely be a good use of the trolley.
Your timeframe here, personally, I don't think you need to worry about being at 11 o'clock. I mean, we have events down there, and the community better get used to us having events down there. It's gonna be, it's gonna be late, you know, and it's gonna be loud. And, you know, for the kids, I think, you know, if you want to move it back to 11, I personally think it's fine, in my opinion. And the other thing is, you know, we do have a lot of material down there right now piled on there, and I'm hoping that it'll be gone in time. You know, that's, that's a wage yet. I would think that maybe that'll be moved.
Well, that would be ideal if it is. Nick and I have talked some about it. I know there's some of that fill piled up there that they're gonna use on the stairs and the concrete. So, ideally, if there's enough space, if right before, so you have, when you walk down there, you have that kind of the grassy area, then you have the first transformer, former, then you have all the material piled up, then you have the second power station. If there's enough space before that, we could, if the stuff's not gone by then, we could, you know, because the, the band will set up on that end. We can have the curtains down so the kids won't even see that fill and stuff, and we could set it before there. The only problem with that is, I don't know, I haven't gotten measured yet, if there's enough width for 40 feet because it's kind of a peninsula area for it starts sloping down to where you usually set the vendors and Waschanga Day in that area. I don't know if there's on the far end, on the farther south end of that, I don't know if there's enough 40-foot width to set up a tent before it starts sloping down. There is on the north side of that little lot, there's plenty of width. So, that would be the ideal space, is that first little section, basically where people were sitting. That would be the seating area during the Waschanga Days, and then the stage was on that next section where the fill is. So, I think we can work around the materials if, if it's there.
I think it'll probably be moved around some too.
Yeah, there'll be some work probably in between now and then.
Yeah, definitely. So, yeah, that, I think we can work around that. The picnic tables are kind of piled up there in that one area right now, which I'm, I mean, that, that would be easy, something we could help move even if needed to be.
They're pretty heavy.
Bring some football players.
Yeah, get some, get some muscle, yeah. But we could, Nick and I can work on that and see. I think we can work around whatever's up there now currently, yeah.
I think it sounds neat. Actually, where those picnic tables are, if they were gone, that might be the spot.
Yeah, that's kind of the area we're thinking, yeah, yeah.
And they could be, do some places.
Well, great, well, if that works for everybody, we'll, we'll move forward and plan on that if that's okay. With the council's permission.
Do I hear much into?
There's power.
Yeah, there's power there.
Yeah.
There's two, there's two power stations there.
Yeah.
So, you guys will be good on that. Actually, there's three power stations.
Yeah, as I said, I know there's two for sure that I've seen right by where we want.
There's that one.
Yeah.
There's three now, Eric Max, so it'll be plenty of power.
Yeah.
Who, who was the first?
Uh, first was Jason, second, I have Sharon or Mark, either one. So, all those in favor? Opposed? Let's carry six to zero.
Great, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Glad to know if you need anything else.
Perfect. And then, second thing real quick, I just wanted to bring it up to the council. Nick and I have been working on it, and so I wanted to bring it up tonight to get some direction. We've been seeking, working for some bids for concrete. We have been asked to host regional baseball. And so, one of the things we'll have to do is have a bigger seating capacity for that. Well, we've been working, trying to, if COVID wouldn't have happened, we probably had been done by now, but with COVID coming up and everything, it's kind of put the kibosh on some stuff. But we still want to get, I've got the bids for the bleachers to get the, the seating capacity up to around 500 to 600 people down there with more stadium-style bleachers that go up taller. But we have to have a concrete pad for that. And so, Nick and I have been working to get, so we got, what, three bids now, possibly four, to come in. If we know we're gonna move forward with that, I can get, the problem with the bleachers, it's a four-week drawing time since they're custom and a six to eight week lead time to get them here. Regional baseball, we probably won't make that, it's gonna be close to make that timeline at this point. But if we can just get it done and be ready to move forward for the next time we get the opportunity to host, great. But even at this time, if we get the pad done, the bleachers on here, I can, I'm gonna work with a seating company to see if they even maybe rent us a pair of bleachers or some bleachers that we can move in, at least to have the capacity. Won't be as nice as when we get the permanent ones in, but at least it's something that we still host the regional tournament here. Because with KESHA, we want to keep on their good side because we want to keep, you know, we're getting in a pretty good routine with hosting at least some sort of regional or district wrestling event. We got to host substate basketball this year. So, if we keep those events, that's just good for the, obviously, for our community, to keep bringing in parents and families to come eat and get gas and do those types of things here as well. So, it's, it's just a win-win all the way around. So, we want to keep that relationship with KESHA. So, we've accepted it. If we have to, in the past, from what Jayce told me, if we can't get it done here, they've got Emporia as a backup to host it down at Soames Grove. But obviously, we want to keep it here. So, even if we have to do something alternative this year, at least it keeps us on the list of, hey, we're the first ones they call to host something because we have the facilities to do it and the want-to to do it. Because a lot of schools don't like hosting it because it's a lot of work on the school side to host those events. So, but we're fortunate, we have great, Jay and Kelly and the administration, the workers there, and coaches are really good at helping with those things. So, so I'd like to kind of visit with you about that, see what direction you guys think about that and get Nick involved in this conversation.
We don't have another council meeting until April 6th. So, what I would like is if the committee and I, once we get the bids back, that we can even move forward with getting the concrete work done, as long as the committee's in agreement. You guys okay with that?
Yeah, absolutely. I think there's, there's some other work over there that we could maybe get done at the same time, connecting it to our new snack shacks and our bathrooms at the same time.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you talked about pouring a concrete pad up too.
Yeah, so I think, you know, we might be able to accomplish. You know, some things here with this.
Because the pad we've been bidding out for the con, for the bleachers, it's a pretty big pad. It comes out 18 or 19 feet back. It's, it's kind of a half of a hexagonal pattern going around from each side to the backstop to the other side. So, there'll be three sets of bleachers. For ADA purposes and costs, we won't connect the bleachers so there'll be pathways between, because once you connect them, it changes it to a different style bleachers, which is different ADA requirements and plus a lot more custom work. They go from about $40,000 to about $100,000. So, it's just not worth it to do that. But we'll still get the same effect, stadium-style. They just won't be connected in between the three wedges. So, yeah, I, I think that pad's gonna be pretty big. So, yeah, there's all, it's gonna be closer to the snack shack anyhow, so to fill that on in is gonna be not, not much more yardage.
This might fall into our long-term plans anyway, you know.
So, as long as the council, that's what I would ask. Since we have three weeks in between, I should have the other bid back, probably tomorrow, Wednesday if they're gonna bid on it, and then we can move forward with deciding who we're gonna have do it.
I think the motion to allow the committee to make the decision.
Second. Committee to work on it.
Okay, you second, okay. So, Keith and Mark for that.
I think that would be great for the community if we could make sure and have that here this year. There'd be a lot of, it's a win-win for everyone.
Yep. Because there's usually, I don't know, in baseball, it's, it's probably, I think, eight or 16 teams. You multiply it by, you know, 20 kids on a roster, and then each kid bringing an average of three or four family members that come watch. That's, that's a lot of, a lot of people flowing through town that's just gonna spend dollars.
We tried to do this in 2019, but we didn't have the money and the budget to do it at that time. Then COVID happened, and obviously, there was no baseball last year, so.
Tournaments are definitely good for a community.
Yep.
What's the date on the regional tournament?
It's the third week in May, I believe. I got it on the calendar. Yeah, it, the, the catch will be, like, like I said, once, if we know, if I know that it's, it's gonna have, the pad will happen, I can get the bleachers going now.
I think we ought to make a commitment, at least verbally. But we don't work toward that goal, but get the bleachers.
Yeah.
It's hard to commit on a council until we actually have a dollar amount.
Yeah, I think, so I have a high bid of $14,500 and a low bid of.
$86.
$86.
So, what we could do is we could make a motion and put it up to $16,000 or whatever, just not to exceed $16,000.
Yeah, I think if you don't exceed $15,000, you'll be.
But if we're gonna do some extra work, we might want to even bump it up to $20,000 for.
Well, you could, I mean, I, you could approve this work and then come back and do any additional work. Second, my biggest thing is I don't want to call them. I can't, once I commit, I can't back out because they're custom. So, we're on the hook, and if we don't have anywhere to put them, now we've got $40,000 with bleachers.
We don't want you to have to do that.
Yeah. So, I mean, like, I mean, the lowest bid was $8600 and some change, and the second bid was $9700, and the highest bid was $14,000 some. One of, you know, I'd like, if we could, stay local with that as well and not farm out of town work in. The lowest bid is a company out of Manhattan. The second bid is a local company, it's only $500 more. The highest bid's a local company as well, but it's, it's way too high. So, the bid fluctuation there for only $500 or $600 more, I think it's worth to stay local. But that's obviously not my call. But we, if we can get that done, if I, I know the pad will happen, I'll go ahead and get the bleachers ordered. I just want to make sure we're all in agreement on, you know, we're on the same page. So, I know it's a commitment on your end too.
Even the ten would get it. Well, I would do 15 if we're gonna pour that piece in between. While you're forming it up, you might as well form it and do it all one.
It's all labor.
I'll make a motion that we, and I'm gonna bump it up to $16,000, just so we have some room.
Give you some padding, yeah.
You know, not to exceed $16,000 to get some concrete work done at Benai Smithfield.
Second.
Awesome.
Okay, all those in favor? Opposed?
Nick, did we get a bid from that new construction company that's moving to town? Sage?
Sage, he hasn't, yeah, he hasn't moved here yet. He doesn't even have, he's not even licensed with the city.
Oh, he's not? Well, you might mention it to him just to feed you.
Yeah, I can do that.
Well, we've already put the numbers out there in the public. We really can't do it now.
Well, that's true.
There's more concrete work coming up though.
I mean, for the pair thing, we've already, we've already said it, so we really can't do that right now. All right, Aaron.
Perfect, thanks, guys. Appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
Aaron, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Could you have somebody or worked maybe with the chamber to tell the restaurants the date of that tournament and some of the others?
Yes, absolutely.
I had one that I told about Substate. I just had to be talking to one of the managers, and they ordered extra. It still ran out of food for, for some bacon. So, they were really disappointed that they didn't have more food. And so, and they said they'd sure like to know, but they never do know when these things, they, it hits them, they don't have enough people hired to work them, and they don't have enough food for those late sales.
Absolutely, because one of the things we did for this tournament, as you well know, because it was your, coming to you, the suggestion that you had, that was a great idea too, is promoting. So, we're sending out, so just for the parents, we send out to the schools ahead of time, here's, here's things available in Council Grove. And then when they came in, we stuffed advertisements in, you know, as well that they can have. Because the idea will be, you know, we may have 800 people to show the first night, and then the second night, now they go, hey, let's come early because, hey, let's go check out the Hayes House, and our game's at 6:00, let's get there at 5:00 and go eat before the game, you know. But those types of things can trickery a lot. And then they're like, hey, that would be really cool. Let's make that weekend trip the next time. And when I'm playing ball, let's come here on the weekend now and go check out the commission or something else and still eat here, maybe stay in the cottage house. So, yeah, those things have a lot of trickle effects that can be huge.
Well, they, they, actually, it was the Sonic, and they said that, they said that the other two restaurants were closed earlier, and they just, they said we hated it because people would say, you're out, you're out, you don't have anything. And nothing else was open that evening late, and.
That's a great idea.
Yeah, so they said, if, they said, would you let us know? And they said all of them, they said not just us, but all of them.
They would need some lead time to get their hair in.
Yeah, get their people scheduled, so.
That's a great idea. We notify the parents and schools, they're coming. We need to do it the other way too, notify the town, it could be an increase in traffic.
Sure.
Yeah, absolutely. No good idea.
Thank you.
Aaron, I'm actually working with Susan at the chamber on that. But I imagine, I already made a note to myself, is it on the USD 417?
Yeah, it's on our calendar.
So, I can, I can work with her on that.
That's like a community calendar in mind too.
Yeah, that's, that's kind of the goal of it, is to give it to the businesses so they have a calendar of everything for the whole year.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, we get between all that.
Thank you, yeah, important, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thanks, guys.
Okay, you guys have a nice evening. Okay, moving forward. Next, we'll go to the minutes from the previous meeting, appropriations, and there are not any, like, haven't transferred, so the consent agenda. Do I hear much into approve that?
No, you can.
Okay, second? Sharon? Okay, it's been moved to second and to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor? Motion carries six to zero. Okay. Oh, business. CTS update, Nick?
We had a wrap-up meeting today. They're hoping to be out here by the end of the week with the meter installs. They had all the meters they needed, so the plan is for them to be done at the end of the week.
Okay.
And everything has went really well and smooth, and they've lived up to what they said they were gonna do. So, they said if we have any issues, they're a phone call away, so.
Will they give us some sort of a report after they're done?
Yeah, so I have to schedule a walkthrough with Christie, the guy that was the project manager, and then I will get a report of what was installed and what they did to each facility.
And then maybe down the road a little bit, the money that we're, will there be like reports of what we're actually saving and where we're.
Yeah, so they have projections. So, we started setting aside money since this is all started to be able to pay the note to the, the bank on it, so at least purchase, so. But they had it broken down, how much you should save at each facility. And then, a bigger portion of that will come out of the water department budget because of the water meters and the software and all that. That was a big part of that project, so.
That's good. Yeah, a little report here and there would be good on that, so. Are you seeing any results in terms of the private people and their meter readings or anything?
We've had some people come in here concerned if their water, if you had increased rates. The good thing about this new software is we can go in on a laptop, take a laptop over there, and we can go hour by hour and show them where their high water usage is. We had a real man who said, well, I've never used 5,000 gallons before. What we were able to show him was, and Derek went over there and showed him, goes, what, 10:30? What happens at 10:30 at your house every day of the week? He goes, my wife does dishes and she does laundry. He goes, my wife does dishes and she does laundry. And Derek goes, that's where your high usage is, is right there. You know, so you'd be able to go by hour by hour to see where the usage is at with this new software, which is, it alleviates a lot of the questions about people and their billing, because when you show them that, it's pretty hard to argue that, you know, it's the city's new system that's having the problem.
And it sounds like they have one of the older meters that wasn't really counting quite correctly.
Yeah, so the ones that had those fingers in them, they took some apart and looked at them, they were pretty corroded up on the inside. So, you're getting a lot of low flow that wasn't being counted, so.
Any other questions?
This is curious, you know?
Yeah. North River Walk Extension update, Nick?
So, KDOT approved the plans. I'm waiting on Brian Bryant, who are in the email chain with me, KDOT, BG Consultants, waiting on them to give us a date, a start date. They're doing it, finishing up a project now, and they, they're hoping to get something to us hopefully in the next week or two, a start date.
Maybe right after the rain work, get right out for the next stage.
Yeah, and I suppose we're on quite a bit next week, too, I think, so, which is part of the course.
Any questions about that? Okay, let's start a new business, Community Events Application, GBO Concert and Beer Garden, Off-Field Swimming Pool Park.
That's all Max.
Hey, Max.
Well, I'll start with just talking about the Santa Fe Trail 200 event. Sharon just informed me that that event's most likely getting pushed back to October, so I'll just, right out of the gun, plan on pulling that, hopefully...
Can I ask why that is?
Well, we've just run into several problems, so.
I was gonna say, if it's a deal with having events, I know Dr. Fries has been a little bit more...
No, it's not that. It's, you know, we don't, we don't feel like the amphitheater will be ready by then.
But actually, that's a, that's a good point, too, you know, if he's uncomfortable about it, we had...
Well, he wasn't, he wasn't uncomfortable about it, that's what I was saying. I didn't know, but if that was the reasoning, I can...
No.
So, I'll be back later for that. The GBO Concert and Beer Garden, this is an event we'd actually planned last year that was canceled from COVID. It's, it all goes around the glass blown open disc golf tournament that happens every year in Emporia. Basically, this event has expanded so much that it's, they've decided to share with other communities that have good courses, and Council Grove is fortunate enough to get that. So, I've been working with Melanie Inc. on that, and like I said, we kind of planned it from last year, too, but basically, we'll be doing a beer garden there, just north of the swimming, swimming pool in the park area there, fencing off that area. And I think in that diagram I've, I showed, you know, where we're planning on having a small stage, probably just a horse trailer, and my band's playing at it, and then BG's will be catering it. Pretty typical beer garden fenced off, all the entrances, exits marked. It'll be beer only, no liquor. It's, we'll be over by 10, I'm sure. It's a Wednesday night.
Is that for the citizens, too, or just the...?
Everybody, yeah, it's open to the public. Yep. But they, they told me they expect 400 to 500 people here for that tournament, for that day. I don't imagine it'll be that many people for the night. We've, we've done disc golf tournaments before, not, a lot of people are traveling. It's a Wednesday night. I think it's probably going to be 100 to 150 people, would be my guess.
What date is that?
This is April 28th.
April 28th?
I think that's what I got there.
Yeah, that's what I heard.
Yeah.
For those who are watching this on...
Yeah, it'll be a great, a great thing for Council Grove. I remember two years ago, we had people coming into the bar that were actually staying in Council Grove because they didn't have hotel rooms available in Emporia. So, that's pretty cool that we're now getting, well, we should have, see even more of that these upcoming years between disc golf tournaments, bicycle races, stuff like that. It's very, we're very fortunate to, to get some of that.
We gotta look at expanding our disc golf throughout the town to draw more people in.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, and, and that's the thing about disc golf, it's pretty cheap. You know, you're not watering grass like a, like a golf course, you're not having to mow it perfectly. You're throwing a $10, $15 disc around and throwing in a basket with chains on it. It's just awesome, you know? The nice ones have concrete pads and, you know, and it's, it's just wildly popular and...
Years ago, we talked about doing one down here on the River Walk and having it where you have to throw across the river, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, we've got a lot of local people that are actively interested in it. Again, it's, it's been a huge thing for Emporia. You know, and we're connected to them, you know, not just from the highways and stuff, but from the, the cycle trails that connect us. So, it's really, we're really fortunate to have that coming our way, and it's only going to get more and more popular, I feel. Any questions on the event, or?
Yeah, I think you'll do them, yeah.
Is I the nine long enough? Did you say maybe 10?
I think 10 at the latest. Did I put nine on it? Yeah, I guess I'd probably go ahead and assume, put 10 on it to be the mo, the latest. I'm working...
Is it with the chief on this already?
I have not, Nick.
He's aware of it. Melanie and Ryan Tibido are supposed to come in with the application for GBO. I'll probably do that at the April 6 meeting, since this event's not till the end of April. Melanie's called me a few times, asking about things and how they should do things, so they're trying to get all their stuff together. And then, once they have their plan for parking over here and stuff like that, I'll give all that to Sean, make sure Sean's good with all that, so.
In the past, we've approved these if they've been approved by the chief.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to work with them.
So, we can do it from 10 to 15?
Yeah. I'm, I'm just kind of hesitant, because again, this is really dynamic discs event. It's not necessarily a BG's event.
You're just fine with it.
Yeah, so, you know, and I've kind of told them, if, if I need to be involved more, let me know, and, because, yeah.
I mean, Max, what happens if it rains this day?
I think it'll be canceled. I think, I don't think there'll be a backup. I highly doubt with the health department and stuff. I wouldn't be surprised if they still disc golf, but I don't think we'll plan on doing the event.
Contingency building, move the...
Not that I know of. And I just imagine with the health department, if, if they haven't came up with something now, I don't think there will be a backup plan, so.
So, do I hear a motion to be able to do a beer garden and be able to use the park north of the swimming pool for the stage and the beer garden, beer garden contingent upon through all by the...
So, move.
Okay.
Will there be water out there in the hydrants? Just, is that something they need?
One nearby, the Rotary Shelter, there's hydrant there.
Will that be turned on by then? Cool. I'm not sure if we'll need it or not, but it's good to know. And then is that porta, I know there's already one porta potty there usually. Is it, will it be there around that time?
There's bathrooms, too, over there, Max, in that soccer building down below.
Okay, those will be unlocked?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. Awesome. That's great to know. Okay, and then, yeah, like we said about...
Okay, wait, we got about...
Who said that?
Uh, second was Mark Hart, okay? All those in favor? No, it's Mark's motion carries six, zero. Okay, and now on to the next one.
Okay. Drive-In Concert, this is through the Arts Council, pretty much doing the same thing we did last year. We saw a huge success, and definitely a big drive to do that again this year. We use that space. I call it the caretaker shack. I don't know if there's a better name for it. But, uh, pretty much the same thing, what we've been doing, where we bring in, the city's brought us, let us use their flatbed trailer for it, and let us use the electricity that's out there. And then, it's, it's open to the public, it's free, no admission charge, again, all through the Arts Council. Last year with COVID, we didn't do any vendors. We don't plan on doing any beer sales or anything like that. We're thinking maybe about bringing a food truck in. If we do that, we'll definitely make sure they get a permit or whatnot, whatever the, the situation is with that out there, since that's city property. I know I'll probably need to talk to the, the person who's haying that area and make sure we get it hayed down, or if they don't. Last year, my dad did it, so if we need to get it cut down, I'll, I'll make sure everything's good there with whoever has that contract. Like I said, we're, it was a huge success last year. It was actually the, the first time the Arts Council ever made money off an event in my time there, so that was really exciting and just, just great to have, you know, so, for other, for other future events. And I think even with COVID being over, I think people will still really enjoy it.
Okay, do I hear a motion? Jason? Jason and Keith, okay. All those in favor? Motion carries.
Okay, thank you, guys.
To Mr. Alley.
Yeah.
I'm gonna get back to her.
Exciting times for you. Okay, that's Jason. Okay. Next, we're, uh, the Pride Committee for their resolution that they have every year, I believe it is, and then Sprangina Madonna Park. Landscaping. Andrew.
Hi, I'm Angie Knight, back again. If you have any questions about that resolution, I can answer them. But that is the resolution that the City of Council Grove fills out every year to say that you all approve of the Pride program in Council Grove and that you will support us in our endeavors.
Okay.
So, we would love if you would like to continue us to provide free labor for the community.
I think that's a big yes.
We all like that. Does anybody have any questions about the Pride Resolution?
No, thank you for everything you do.
Of course, absolutely.
Go ahead. A motion to approve the resolution?
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, moved to seconded to approve the Pride Resolution for 2021. All those in favor? Motion carries.
And that resolution is 031621-01.
Okay. I have my phone out, just so I can get these dates correct for you all, don't want to mess those up. The next thing was the spring and fall cleanup. We didn't do those last year because of COVID, and, you know, putting the city crews at risk, obviously, going out, being at people's homes, but we would like to be able to offer those again to the public for the spring. The dates that I had spoken with Nick about, the first, the first week was household item cleanup, which is the week of Earth Day, so April 19 through 23. And then the second week of cleanup was leaves and brush cleanup, and I did that towards the end of May, so it's closer to Memorial Day, people are cleaning up their homes, having company and things like that. So, May 17 through 21 for leaves and brush cleanup. And Nick has kind of all the information about what's okay, what's not okay, and we can...
But then it's a website and all that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I talked to Jeff Barbo about it. He's fine with, I told him probably mid-April would be when we'd do the, the household good cleanup and all that stuff. And then May, we would do the, the brush and all that.
We're gonna have it where they call in again and ask for pickup, or?
Yeah, so call this, the way we had it before was call the city clerk.
Yeah, they call in, and Laura and Teresa, they have a spreadsheet, and they put people's names, and then they...
Schedule the date.
Comes and picks up that every mon, every morning, and they go out and deal with it, so.
I've had people ask about it already this year, so.
Yep.
Since we didn't do it last year, they're already...
Yeah, so I guess the Pride part of doing that is we do the promotional part.
Advertising.
Yeah, we take it upon ourselves to get the word out to people and coordinate between the city and the public how that will operate.
I don't think the six, eight, 10 ladies would be out there, would want to be out there.
No.
Pushing that stuff in the pickups, that's not good, or the big trucks.
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion concerning this spring cleanup? Jason? Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to work with Pride on the spring cleanups on April, approximately April 19 through 23, and May 17 through 21. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Thank you, guys.
Cool. Another, Angie's gonna talk about the Madonna area. It's something that we talked about at the last meeting, that we don't know where we're gonna get, how it's gonna work out with Pride, but we're working on new planters downtown. We also need new trashcans in our community. So, we are trying to figure out how we're going to write to the foundations, to do some fundraising for that, but if you all would like to talk as the Road and Parks Committee, Street and Parks, sorry, we'd love any kind of input, help, cooperation, collaboration.
Yeah, I, I recommend to Angie to do a sales tax grant for the planters downtown.
We'll do that.
Yeah. We just wanted to make sure that if we do planters, that they're in line with also new trashcans for the community, so we're not competing with ISOs downtown.
A cohesive look.
Yeah.
They are all rotting. They are really bad. Yeah, they really are. And we actually need extra trashcans, it looks like, because they're full quite often now, we, now that we have more people. Is that something that, that any of the committees have looked at at all yet?
No.
Okay.
Just wanna, just put that bug in your ear, so, then Angie can talk about the Madonna.
We'll say on the Madonna, the park, that's kind of a tricky thing, because the DAR kind of holds claim to that. And so, anything that's done through there, we try to run it through them a little bit, so.
I think they were talking about the areas where I had the rocker moved.
Yeah, not, not where the Madonna is.
Yeah, not the statues, not...
No, we're not touching that, just the...
I understand that, but they, they have the, they claim the whole park, I think.
Okay. Well, I guess I'd never seen them do anything outside the, I didn't know that.
Well, I'm saying it wouldn't hurt to run it by them.
Well, I think, yeah, me and her talk. She's gonna work, get ahold of the DAR to see if they want to help with the project. Yeah, they're working on it, so.
Well, do you have the lands?
Pictures are in the packet.
Okay, you guys have pictures of what Twin...
Get it on pages.
Twin Nursery has suggesting. And we've got an estimate from her, about $1,500 for those plants, which I didn't think was bad at all. And anyway, so, I mean, we can talk to the DAR about that. I guess if they have different ideas, we can step back and let them handle it. And that's fine. I don't want to step on any toes, so. But if they're okay with, with that, and what, what we would do is probably include that in our sales tax grant, and then we'd get a group together to do a planting day.
That's awesome.
Is there, is there any water in those areas that...
There's water over there.
Yeah, there's a, there's a spout over there, but these are, I specifically asked her to do drought resistant plants.
Okay.
So, once they get established...
They should be okay.
And I will say, this bid is for bigger plants rather than smaller plants. With all the events happening, I told her I think they need to be fuller. So, again, I think that this is a really good bid. And it's local, which is not... Yeah, it's local, and she'll come. And so, what we would ask from the crews is just to clean the beds up and maybe put some mulch in or something.
We probably won't do that till you guys plant.
Till they're done, yeah. And then maybe help with a little, you know, weed spraying here and there, like you normally would do.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear, who is this from?
Uh, Twin Oak Nursery.
Chris, yeah. Oh, Chris, yeah.
Yeah, she did the landscaping drawing for free, and she'll bring them in and place them for free.
She's the one that's working with us on the tree material program.
So, you guys worked with her?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess we need permission contingent on the DAR approving it to go forward. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make it.
Jason? Second.
Did somebody say it?
Hmm?
Did somebody say it?
No.
I'll second it, okay. Sorry.
No, no, that's right. If the, uh, before you vote... These are mastipug, we don't know. Before you vote, I guess if the DAR has strong feelings against it, we'll, we'll let, come back and tell them, you know, we'll, I'll let you know that we're not moving forward.
Charmin probably the one she needs a contact?
She's a member of the DAR.
Why, no, she's the one who's...
I just know Mo to ask her, and that's the only one I know on there.
Yeah, there's several of them. I don't know who to say. Charmin's and Rick have been volunteering around the statue.
Right, that's why I thought of them.
Okay.
Paul Lee Anderson did an event that they publicized on his team.
Oh, okay, okay.
Gives you a free to contact.
Yeah, I can't imagine they wouldn't like it, but they might also.
No, they'll probably love it.
I think so. It's just good to tell them. I'm sure that we'll keep them in the loop.
Yeah. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. That's good. Thank you, guys, for your work.
Thank you all.
We appreciate your support. What's happening?
Maybe you'll email that to me when it's done, so I can send it to the...
Yes, yeah, well, I haven't ever signed it, and I'll...
How many revelations about the trashcans and what? Let us know.
Yes, yeah. Trash cans 2021.
Can you send pictures of the planters you're wanting and what the trashcans look like? I think that'd be easier to... Have a visual.
Once we figure out which one.
Yeah, still have some work to do, but yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
We can work together, for sure.
Yeah.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Yep, see you later.
Okay, next we have the Recreation Committee recommendation.
You got that.
This is, this is all you need for it, okay?
Yeah, there should be three of them.
Okay, at this time, I would like to point the following people to the concession worker position at a pay rate of $7.69 per hour. Remy Marsh, Diller, Cohen Swally, Cameron Frager, Casai, Casia, I'm not sure how to say that, Casa, Mullen, Drew Bookman, Ethan Liff, Santa Good, Dax Myers, and Ella Kirk. And I would welcome a motion to approve that appointment.
So, move.
I'll second it.
Okay. Been moved to seconded to approve the appointment of the concession workers. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries six, zero. Okay. Next, Police and Fire Recommendation. The Police and Fire Committee has recommended that Hunter Berger be promoted from Class B officer to Class A officer at a pay rate of $18.32 per hour. He has completed the six-month probationary period and has shown the necessary aptitude for promotion for this, for this promotion. So, I would like to appoint Hunter Berger. Or I guess I just need to...
You just need to appoint him as a Class A officer.
Okay, appoint him, so it's a promotion, but it still needs to be appointed.
Yes.
Okay, Hunter Berger, at this time, I'd like to appoint Hunter Berger from Class B to Class A officer at a pay rate of $18.32 per hour, and I would appreciate a motion to...
So, move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of Hunter Berger. All those in favor? Motion carries. Six to nothing, okay, thank you. Okay. Police and Fire, Streets and Parks Recommendation. The Streets and Parks Committee is recommending the purchase of a 2014 Dodge 2500 four-by-four from Short Figure Auto in the mountain 195. The purchase of this truck will replace the 2002 Dodge 1500 that continues to have mechanical issues. Both the city mechanic and the cura automotive have recommended replacement of this truck. Do I hear any conversation on this? Nick, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, we just, the 2002 truck, we just continue to have mechanical issues. There's a, oh, a factory defect in the motor. So, the, the push rods get played, and I don't know if everybody knows what I'm talking about. What happens is it kicks the rocker arms off, and you continually have to say, we've had to put a head on it, we've done all kinds of work to this truck, and we're to the point where we're spending more money on it than what it's worth, and just, and we can't trust the truck to go do work in it because it breaks down, so. So, Curious recommended, Chris Curious recommended, and Alan Losser, he said they need to go, because you're gonna continue to just put money in it. It's not gonna, not gonna be able to utilize it, so.
And no offense, Mayor, but did we, did we...
Yes, I did. I talked to Chris, I talked to Chris Bolton at Bolton Auto, I talked to Bolton, talked to both of them. They didn't have any trucks like that, and they said that you're lucky if you can find a truck like that.
Okay.
So, yes, I did talk to...
And it's just our responsibility to do that.
Yep, and I do with everything. So, I talked to both Bolton and Chris Bolton.
I'm always reserved when this kind of stuff happens, because...
Will there be any recovery on the 2002?
Once we get the, Alan, the mechanic, Losser, the mechanic's gonna put the rocker arm, and then we'll put it online and try to get rid of it. I don't think I want to sell it locally. I don't want people to have problems with it, so.
You don't want somebody out of town to have problems with it.
Well, that's what they do on Purple Way. You know, you put it on Purple Way, you're gonna be selling it as is.
Picture of this.
Yeah.
So, there's a lot of stuff like that on Purple Way, because when you look at, we look at trucks and stuff like that, you look at them and, you know, all of it is as is for a reason, so.
Well, this council has been very good about keeping our employees in good equipment, and I think we should just continue doing that.
Yeah, and this, this truck will also help, because, you know, it's a three-quarter ton truck, it's close to a half ton. And we only have one truck that we can use to pull that gear snipe. Well, this went on a way into a problem where we need the gear... And we only have one truck that we can use to pull that gooseneck. Well, this went on a way into a problem where we need the gooseneck, but it had the salt bed on it, the salt spreader on it, so we couldn't utilize that gooseneck because we only have one truck that could do that.
Can this be, can a snowplow be mounted on this one too?
It can, if we want to do that. It's pretty expensive to get that all wired up and we have to send it somewhere to get all that done, but yes.
But it's an option if we were.
Yes, yep, so.
I know that Rick has loved for these trucks for a long, a lot of different places.
Yeah, this is a TCT truck. So McCure has done all the work on the truck. He knows the history of the truck. And he said the truck would be a good truck for the city. And there's a couple of mechanical things we have to, there's Alan said probably a year, year and a half from now, the front left wheel burn will have to be replaced, which is pretty common on a four-wheel drive truck. And then, oh, there's another thing. But anyways, all that can be done in the house. Alan can handle doing all of it. So McCure felt really good about the city buying it because he had already fixed all the issues that come up with those trucks. They've already been fixed.
How much money do we have in that reserve?
Oh, about eighty thousand. I think it's seventy-nine something.
Do we have any other questions?
Seventy-nine thousand five hundred fifteen thirty-two.
I'd move that we get him a truck.
Can you state the amount, please?
I'd move that we purchase a truck from Short Figure Auto for nineteen five. I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved to seconded to purchase a 2014 Dodge truck in the amount of nineteen five to come from equipment reserve. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries, six zero. Okay. That's a performance review. Let's see, I guess that's, we've run through all the new business, so let's go to governing body comments. We'll start with Jason.
I don't have anything this week.
Okay, Mark Burner?
About tonight.
Okay, Keith?
I don't want to break tradition, but I'm good also. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Mark?
I just like to express to Councilman Seagris that he's in my thoughts and prayers and, you know, we're here for you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Larry, do you have anything?
Nothing this evening.
Sharon?
Nope.
Yes, so I told the mayor about this and I think Mark's seen it today at lunchtime. Over there at the Riverwalk Park where we had all that split rail fence, one of the posts got hit. And I had them pull all the posts and take limestone rocks and line everything. It looks considerably better. And once it dries out a little bit, we'll get some colored rock to put around the limestones and make it a little bit nicer back there, but it looks a lot better without that split rail.
It, in my opinion, it opened that up, you know, you know, it gives the appearance of this wide open area. But yet, you know, the cars are gonna have to stay within where they need to or they're gonna be going out to the body shop.
It'll be different than running into a pole.
Yeah, I mean.
Always want to leave your board.
Yeah, it looks good, yeah.
So, and where Jeff and his guys are working, are gonna start working on the shelters out at City Lake, painting those, getting those taken care of. He's getting the paint and stuff ordered and getting all that ready to go for when we have a few warm days when we get out there and get to work on getting those taken care of, like we talked about for the last year and a half, so. And then Mark talked to me about a camera today. And funny thing, Jay Troxel was reading the minutes from a previous meeting when that came up. And he has offered to let us mount that on the back of his building and run any wires we need to, whatever, inside the building or outside the building, whatever. Because he would like to have a camera back there because he has people at Park back there to use that studio and I.
Would it be far, too far away to get?
No, I don't think so. Those cameras are pretty amazing.
Okay.
Yeah, those cameras, you can zoom in and out on them and things like that. The one out at the water plant, one of the police officers was looking for a car that drove by. Well, it's such a good camera, you can see the tag numbers on the car. And they go by at forty miles an hour, so. I don't think it would be an issue, but I think that would get it out of the way so people don't mess with it if it's on the back of that building.
Which building was that?
Uh, Tiptoes Dance Studio, which used to be the old Duck World Building and Regrown Consignment. I don't know what else it was, so. But I'm gonna give a call to TCT and get a price to do that, so.
It would help. There's some, you know, just bad things happen back in there.
So, yeah. Another thing I've noticed, and I'll probably get, make people mad, but I have an issue with people parking their campers back there. And I don't know what the ordinance is on that. We have one business that has a camper back there, and that out building back there, the other building, I think it's owned by Alexander's now. He rents out and that guy's got an old camper sitting next to that building. And I don't know what you guys think, but I just think it's kind of a.
It seems commercial, isn't it? And so not probably a lot we can do, is there?
As long as the property owner gives them permission and it's not on the city alley, on the city right of way, much of them do, as long as they're not living in them.
You know, that's not happening, so. I just know we're trying to clean that up back there, having campers parked back there and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, I had the same question about people parking campers in our streets next to their houses. But according to James.
It's allowed, yeah.
It's legal, but gosh, I guess I need to put my camper out front, you know.
I would recommend not doing that. Then people will hit it.
See, I just think that, you know, I don't know why our streets are being allowed, you know, for storage, as basically.
It's no different if you have a tagged and titled car that's current, you can leave it set in the street in front of your house. You don't technically have to.
I would tell you the story of Wichita.
Right, as long as it's not a sale, but if it's something you drive every, once a, once a month, you know, you can have it set up there as long as it's tagged and titled and current. Because we had that issue with some of the houses out at City Lake where they got, you know, five or six cars just sitting around, but all of them are tagged and titled and have insurance. And so we can't, there's no, we can enforce on that, so.
That's an ordinance that if we have enough complaints, I guess we could address, but, you know.
Wichita has an ordinance that basically says you can't leave your car in the street in the same place for more than forty-eight hours. And the only reason I know that is because I had one towed off. When I said, you know, it's parked in front of the house, it's my second vehicle, there's more to it, but. Then the judge says, well, it's a nuisance vehicle. So I still had to pay the tow fee, but.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know if you're going down that path.
Yeah.
I feel a lot of upset people, so.
I can tell you when you go to their zoning night, it's a full house.
I'm sure.
You know, what I would suggest, maybe that be brought up at the planning and zoning.
Yeah.
About the campers in the alleys. Maybe they can create a new ordinance or.
I just think it looks bad half campers, you know, you're trying to make that a focal point of your town and then you have an old camper by a building and then you got a camper parked backed in to the entrance to the Hayes House and, you know, that one of the business owners owned and it's just like, you know.
That alley is a nice one, you know, as far as, because it's where everybody drives around to get to the, to park in the front of the Hayes House if they haven't gotten.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I know the owners of the Hayes House at one time, I wanted to kind of beautify that back end of it, but I don't know.
Well, we started it getting rid of those split rail fences. It looks completely different down there. And I don't know if you got, I think I told you guys about Creme Park. We did the same thing at Creme Park too.
Oh, you did?
It's good.
So it looks good.
That's an area maybe we can just work together. Everybody can cooperate sometime. We can start.
It may be a good conversation for the downtown business owners too, to dress up both sides of the building. Because a lot of them have a second entrance off the alley. And then you go to a lot of towns and, you know, they got signage on the back of the building and it's.
Yeah, you can go in, you know, in the Mahantons like that, you have a, either by the mall and you can enter from the back, front or back.
All those buildings.
Yeah, you can walk down the alley and go right into those buildings.
Particularly when it's, when you go to historic towns or tourist towns, particularly when they have a, something behind it, like we have the Riverwalk back, you know, behind over there. I think you see that a lot. They're actually two entrances, two things, so.
Hi, mayor, I did think of something here. For our Santa Fe Trail 200 gunfire at the Santa Fe Trail weekend, I had asked the council permission for folks to camp in Neosho Riverwalk Park. Well, Doc Hink, who's heading this up, informed the committee that people would probably be camping on that Thursday night too. And I only asked for Friday and Saturday night, so I guess I'm asking the council if they can camp on Thursday night. And then along with that, he's asking permission to camp in our, what we call the Axe property over on Valley Street too, to have campers. And when I say campers, I'm not talking about, you know, pool campers. These are people that are gonna be intense, period looking intense, you know, from the eighteen hundreds. And they're actually gonna judge how their camps look. And so with the Riverwalk extension going that way, people will be able to walk right down and go over to.
When is the event again, Mark?
July, this would be July fifteenth, sixteenth, and seventeenth.
I don't think, I don't know if Axe will have an issue with it or Masters, whether it be the one to ever think it would affect. Because it's right there in front of Axe, it's right at a corner to.
Yeah, again, it's part of the Riverwalk, you know, and. There will be gunfire. There will be shooting blanks.
Hopefully.
Yeah, blanks. There'll be blanks.
I'll watch from a distance.
No, they probably have an all quiet time, I would think, that they, you know, that they do these things. But, you know, during the day, they'll be shooting, you know, because people will be able to visit and walk through the site and whatever and see things, so. And then I got something else I want to talk about too, is get clarification because we need this for insurance. The mayor, you have appointed this committee. This is a city-run committee in my mind. So we're wondering why we can't be insured under the city's umbrella.
Who, so I talked to Tyler about that and he, I explained to him that it's a city-appointed committee that has council members on it. And his thing was, well, do the financials run through the city? I said, no, but I said it's a city committee. And I said, I don't see the difference. It's appointed by the mayor with council members doing events for the city. I said, I don't see why it can't be insured underneath the city. And he said he's gonna come to your meeting.
He did.
And talk to you guys about it and get clarification, but I've never, I haven't heard back from him about it.
Well, we said we were gonna come before the council because we wanted to get clarification, right, Sharon?
Yes, right.
I guess, I guess in my mind, he would be covered. I mean, Bill, what do you think?
Well, the city certainly would have an insurable interest in the thing and that's, you know, one of the keys to being eligible for the coverage. Of course, the company doesn't have an obligation to extend the coverage either if it's outside the contract, but I guess it's an issue of how much.
It's on city property and it's city events.
All of the events are on several different.
Headed up by city council members. And the city has given money, sales tax money and things like that to the events. So I, my mind, I can see that and I can give Tim a call tomorrow.
We come to, we come to the council for every event to get approval, everything that we're doing.
Yeah.
Sharon and I both.
He did say, and we can do more, you know, in terms on, it comes down to how much you want to know, how many details you want to know of each one of the events and so on. But we'd be happy to provide as much as you want to.
I told him when I talked to him about it, because he called me because he's getting ready to come to your guys' meeting and he goes, what do you think? I said, I think it's insurable under the city. He goes, well, let me go talk to them and see what they say and I'll get back to you. And I hadn't heard from him.
I think that's what we, Sharon and I both tried to get across, you know, we felt like this is a city committee, you know, that is appointed by the mayor.
Yeah, and that's what I explained to him too, Mark.
I think he wanted us to confirm and thank you for the new rule.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, and I talked to him before he went to that meeting. You guys pretty much echoed what I told him. He was worried about the financial part of it and I said, but the money is being applied through the Santa Fe Trail 200, which is a city committee. The funds are being followed back through the city. I said, just because we don't have a line item in our budget, doesn't mean that it's not a city thing.
Right.
Because that's kind of what he was getting at. Do we have a line item for us? And we don't have a line item for a lot of events that we do, so.
And we'll be happy to even provide the financial reports too.
Yeah, absolutely.
I don't think it's gonna be that big a deal, to be honest with you. I'll give him a call tomorrow and follow up with him. I actually seen him at the Hayes House today before your trailer meeting. I didn't even think about that.
Well, I don't know if we need an actual motion, mayor, or a proclamation or what, that this is a city.
I don't think, let me talk to.
Everybody done that?
Yeah, let me talk to him, Mark, tomorrow. And if we need to do something or have a different conversation, we can.
Okay.
And just let us know what else you need to, I mean, we're, we'll provide everything you need.
Right, well, I know that. No, I'm not, I don't have a concern with it because I think you did earlier because it's on city property and it's city events and it's a city committee.
Yeah.
Who's being funded through, part of it's being funded through the city.
I didn't, you know, we could go out and buy our own insurance policy, but I just don't see any need for it when we could use that money to help.
I guess here's how I see it, Mark. We're gonna let GBO, we're gonna let these other events happen in our parks, but they don't have to have insurance, but you guys are gonna have to have insurance. It doesn't make sense to me.
That's true.
So what's the difference, I guess?
Well, the difference is if we don't, if we're not insured and Bill can vouch for this, then they come after Sharon and I because we're on this committee.
Right, but the city's insurance should cover all that. Just as if something happens on city property with the GBO stuff and things like that, you know, city's insurance, because we allowed that event to happen, would have to cover that.
But we know how people like to sue nowadays and.
I understand that. I mean, am I wrong in any of that, Bill? I mean.
No, but, but we, you know, if you've got a situation where the, where the insurance companies deny you, they're gonna hold coverage on it.
Yeah, well, that's the thing.
That needs to be resolved now.
Yeah, that's what I'll work out with Tim. I'll give him a buzz tomorrow.
I mean, as long as we've got, you know, prior agreement that they're covering this event. Not to say that if it were to come into play later that we wouldn't be able to successfully pursue the coverage, but it would just be so much cleaner if they acknowledged it.
You know, I know for like Fourth of July, we have to get an insurance policy because you have fireworks.
Yeah, I can understand that.
That we have to do, that's not covered under our insurance.
What about Washanga?
Washanga is.
They get their own insurance.
They get their own insurance.
But it's still happening on our properties.
Right, right. So let me talk to him tomorrow and then I'll get back with Mark and you, mayor, and we'll go from there with it, if there's an issue with.
If he does cover things like this, he may in future years increase the premium at.
He already charges us enough. He's supposed to meet, set up a meeting to go through the new insurance rates with me, so we'll see what he says, but.
All right, well, thank you. I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
Yeah, in my opinion, Mark, it should be covered. That's my opinion. That's what I've expressed to Tim.
I just want to protect the committee members, that, you know, that we're out there doing this and I don't want to see us get sued.
No, I, yeah, I don't think anyone wants that.
Well, the city needs to be protected, I would say.
You know, you would still have the tort claims protection, but if it's uninsured, then the city taxpayers would have to cover it. So, you know, you personally would be okay. It's just an issue of who, from whose pocket does it get paid, from the taxpayers or from the insurance company? So it'd be good to.
Would that cover non-city council members that are on that committee?
Well, they're appointed by the city and acting in accordance with the city directive. Was that what I'm understanding?
Yeah, but we only have four members that are appointed by the mayor.
And they have some non.
We have some non-appointed members.
No, the tort claims act's only gonna apply to city sponsorship. And so if they are not. And incidentally, the insurance that the city has probably is not gonna cover them either. You know, because their obligation's gonna be to the city or the agents of the city.
Yeah, they're considered volunteers, which doesn't cover, insurance doesn't cover volunteers unless they're appointed. So like the people that volunteer for Washanga Days and stuff like that, they're not covered. Like when Rotary goes and does stuff, that Washanga Day's insurance doesn't cover Rotary coming if somebody falls or something happens to them, so.
That's the bad news for the volunteers, but the good news for the volunteers isn't that they're only liable for gross negligence. And that's defined.
Pretty hard to prove.
Yeah, oh, very, very difficult.
So. Okay, all right, thanks, Bill.
Thank you. Bill, you're, you didn't have any. Thank you. Bill, you're, you didn't have anything else, right?
I'm done.
Okay, Bill?
I think I took twenty minutes, so it wasn't my goal either.
I have one thing, and that is, some businesses downtown in the past have approached me about the way we are growing and the way we are headed as being like an event area and a, I guess maybe an entertainment district type thing down there, and I have been, and then two of them asked me again today, so I'm bringing this up. They would like to, for us to look into pursuing the availability of curing open liquor on Main Street. And what you're talking about is with our new brewery and our new event centers, for example, going to the brewery, getting a, whatever you call them, a beer, I don't know what you would call them, and being able to walk down to.
Somebody's expressed that to me as well.
Yeah, to, to, like, the Territory Bottle Room, or down to Logan, not Logan, Saito's, you know, we're talking about. Kind of like the district where, I guess they do this at Wartworth and different places, they have small areas where they do that. I see our officer back here shaking his head, but they've asked me to pursue that, they've asked to, you know, for us to look into it, see what it, it would probably be, they're talking, I think, for like primarily, you know, foot traffic only, that kind of stuff, of course.
Oh, hopefully they're not driving.
You know, within just that three-block area, I think.
Yeah, that's what they talked to me about.
Anyway, I don't know what that'll entail, Bill, do you, can, is it state law or is it city law?
You're talking about the current restrictions, yeah, that would all have to be under the ordinance, there wouldn't be anything in state law that.
That's what I thought, I thought it'd have to be within.
Yeah. And are there ordinances in play here?
Not, not with allowing open container on Main Street, we don't have nothing in place that I'm aware of.
Oh, we've had a little advance.
We have special, like, like Waschunga Days, you know, we allow people to do that.
Well, we've had some events where we've had, what, a wine stroll or.
You're down to.
Well, no, no, we've had, early on, we had, we had some on Main Street, didn't we?
Now, all, in the past, everything has, and I've been involved with almost all of those, and it is, you can serve liquor of, you know, whatever kind you want, in your own place where you do business, not, it cannot be sold, because that takes a license, you know, to, or permit or whatever, license to sell it, and they have to leave it when they leave, that.
Oh, we had some where they could go out on the sidewalk and drink it in front of the building or something.
No, we don't, which is another thing that, you know, how.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
That's what I'm talking about. Like, if you go, you know, we have these things, all the, for example, Waschunga Days would be an example, if you go to the Mexican food restaurant, and you want to sit out in the front, they have tables and go and drink a margarita or tacos or whatever, that's what they're kind of talking about. So, I, you know, I don't know, I'm not sure I feel one way or the other about it, but I just, I bring it forward because they have asked me to.
Well, unless there's a, an ordinance in play, they could do it right today.
I think we'd have an ordinance in play that you can't have open container on Main Street.
Okay.
I think maybe in the, in municipalities, we have two booklets that we adopt every year.
Multiple ordinance.
Kansas cities can, I believe that's where that's at.
Yeah, so we'd have to.
So.
If that's the case, then it would be prohibited, that, if that's not the case, then it.
Yeah.
So, we need to look, look into that or whatever, but they have, specifically, and they've asked.
I'll talk to James tomorrow about it.
Yeah, and.
Is, are they speaking about an event-based type deal?
No.
No, I think they're talking about, like, for example, if you came on a Friday night, for example, you, you and your wife go downtown, and you stop at the, I'm just gonna use the brewery, for example, and you get a beer, and your wife wants to go over to the dress shop and look, and carry your beer with you, you know, like you do a soda, all ants, liquor, you know. And then I guess it would be up to each individual business whether you could take it, you know, put a drink inside it yourself, but anyway, I, I kind of just left laying the first time they asked, but it's not gonna go away, so.
Well, I think we've come a long ways from back in the day when we first started talking about having beer gardens, and Debbie and I were the only two on the council that even would consider talking about it, so I think we've come a long ways.
I know we don't have any problem, at least the last three years that we've had Waschunga Days, I've worked the last shift at Waschunga Days when the people are leaving, and if anybody's had a beer with them, you know, and they're getting ready to leave, I have had no problem, just said, hey, can't take your beer out, and they just throw up leathers, guzzle it, or they throw it in the.
Yeah, it's pretty lame on Waschunga Days.
Yeah, well, we don't let them take it out of the, we don't let them take it out.
We've had other people walking around downtown with a beer on Waschunga Days, we kind of.
Yeah, there was some folks sitting in the back of a pickup having.
Yeah, we, you know, the guys are told to use your own judgment on it. Now, somebody's being, driving around on the side-by-side or being wagering or something like that, that's a totally different thing.
Some of them were walking down the alley like the PGs or the Hays House, and stuff like that, but anyway, that's, that's an example, but most of the kids last year, well, not last year, we did, I'm last year, but, like, since the last three years, I've had, never had anybody say, oh, I don't want, that's stupid, or anything like that, they've all been very cordial about, you know, discarding it and seeing how.
It's one of those things, you can try and see how it goes, and if it doesn't work, you can say, oh, none more of this, because you guys don't know that.
I think we need to get some public input on it, too, and I think, you know, I think it's good a way, Mayor, to get it, get the word out there and see what the public thinks about it, so, you know, we're the ones we have to answer to.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have, do I hear motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries sixty, thank you.